Call me in order, oh please rise. When I ask you join me in a moment of reflection on the business that's before us this evening. And please join me to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take the role.
Alderman Brennan.
Here.
Alderman Begley.
Here.
Alderman Bassow.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
I am here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Scully.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
All right, it's my pleasure to introduce the chief, Mike Yacht, as a present, special presentation today, so.
Yeah, Kevin. All right. So, thank you guys for allowing us the time to properly recognize one of our officers. Um, tonight we wanted to honor Officer Kevin Costel, um, giving him an award for a lifesaving order.
There it is.
So rather than try and re-cash this, I'm just gonna kind of read, uh, give you a synopsis of what happened. So on the morning of June twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, you were dispatched to a call for a man in full arrest. While en route to the address, you were advised that the man was unresponsive and had stopped breathing prior to your arrival. Upon arrival, you were led to a bedroom where you confirmed the man to be unresponsive and resonating, experiencing a serious medical crisis. You immediately began CPR chest compressions, and after some time, the man began making sounds indicating that they were breathing and begun again. You continued your lifesaving efforts until paramedics arrived, and you were able to stabilize and transport him to a regular medical care. In the following hours, you continued to interact with the family, offering much-needed comfort and compassion, even taking the time to give family coffee. Over the next days of treatment, the man was able to make significant improvements in terms of a previously unknown medical condition. Your quick response time needed an accurate assessment of the situation, and your calm and professional conduct were crucial to bridge the gap before the man could be treated by medical professionals. Your compassion and caring helped to ease the concerns of loved ones. Your actions were indicative of your diligence, expertise, training, dedication to duty, and credit not only to yourself, but also to the entire Paleosite Police Department and the Paleosites community. Congratulations and thank you for standing with us.
There you go.
Well done, Kevin.
Great work, Kevin, thank you. Kevin's always got a smile on his face, and now he knows he can save lives too, that's even better, so. Congratulations, you and the family too, thanks Kevin. Great, super guy. All right, another special presentation we have tonight, we have a concept plan for a Culvers restaurant to be located at one hundred and eighteen fifty South Harlem, and this is the first step they'll go into, uh, in putting this into a planned unit development, uh, so, uh, gentlemen from Culvers are here, if you'd introduce yourselves, and if anyone have any questions, uh, at a D S, please feel free to ask them, so.
Uh, that's a tough act to follow, congratulations. We'll do our best. Thanks a lot. Thank you, sorry about that. Good evening, everybody, my name's Ryan Swanson, uh, I'm with Art Design Resources out of Loves Park, um, with a civil engineer for the project. With me tonight is Matt Herman, the owner-operator of the proposed store. Uh, I've got a brief presentation to walk through, uh, to kind of propose or show the project, um, and happy to answer any questions, and Matt's here as well to kind of tell a little bit more about himself and his operation. Uh, site's located on College Drive, northwest corner of that Harlem, uh, currently there's a bank there. Uh, that bank is proposed to be basically demolished, including the building, uh, the drive-through operation, and the paving, um, use this if everybody's looking at this, there's a couple access points I'll point out here, right here, close to eighty-three, another ingress point here off of Harlem, and there's cross, uh, cross-access amongst the shopping center, uh, that'll be important in a, in a second. Uh, this just shows the bank, uh, without the overlay. This is the proposed site, as it drops in there, um, it's about, uh, one point, I think a little under two acres that we're proposing to use. The green area on the top is just under an acre, that'll be left open, uh, at this point, uh, potentially for some pu, development in the future, but for now, we're focused on the Culvers, uh, getting that store open, developed and open. Uh, zooming in here, this is the proposed site, um, just a couple things to point out, access, as I mentioned before, um, I'll basically back up a little bit, forty-one hun, uh, forty-one hundred square foot proposed Culvers restaurant, uh, that's located here in this vein area right there, um, drive-through as you see here, this drive-through operation, uh, it's got two points of order, uh, located here, um, basically those, those folks will combine to one window here, and then everything with Culvers, as you probably wear, is made fresh after ordering, uh, so there's stacking, distance queuing, uh, available after that window point, so that's what you see here, uh, on both sides. There is a, a pa, a drive-through, a pass, pass-through lane, uh, throughout the entire stretch of this, in case folks get caught in there or something happens, they can, they can exit, uh, that lane. Uh, as I mentioned, access, this ingress point off of Harlem is going to be maintained, uh, we are extending the protection of this though to allow for better circulation as customers enter, uh, there's really not cross-traffic to interfere with this until they enter this site fully, and then you can see we've got one main drive aisle here that allows them to enter the drive-through, or they can park, uh, in this parking lot throughout here, so really much improved circulation with three, uh, full-size drive aisles. Then the access here is maintained, again, it's a cross-access for the shopping center and out to eighty-three. That driveway I mentioned here is closed, which will improve safety right here, uh, right on top of the intersection, so that's, that's closed entirely. Uh, so otherwise, we're proposing to kind of maintain or improve the existing access, uh, while really improving circulation on the site in general. Um, couple of the features of the site, you can see the landscaping, uh, proposed curved islands, curved and landscaped islands, uh, curbing around the parking lot itself, um, trash enclosure fully screened here at the corner, uh, the northwest corner of the building. Um, and then again, as I mentioned, this area to the north will be left, uh, basically just kind of an open, uh, turf area, uh, until some point in the future, if that's ever developed. Um, that's, that's basically for the site plan itself. Uh, this is just a black-on-white version of the same thing, uh, showing some dimensions and some of the arrows you can see better for circulation, ingress and egress, and then, uh, sixty-three parking spaces, I believe, um, ADA spaces here as required by code. Main doorway here for the customers, and then obviously the larger, you know, parking field to serve that. Proposed building, the modern Culvers, you know, really, um, I think do a good job with, uh, modern architecture, um, there's good articulation, both vertically and horizontally, um, quality materials, and what you really see is a mix of neutral colors, but yet there's still some of the Culvers branded blue, uh, to carry through in terms of the theme. Natural, kind of a stone is kind of the basic trim, ethos, uh, there's some piping and raised parapet to screen roof materials, uh, so really kind of an attractive store. Uh, there's a window area here, uh, the main entry here is in the front. This just gives some perspective views during the daytime, uh, of the store itself, and then nighttime, this kind of show up some decorative sconces that are typically used, uh, for the stores, and, uh, this won't be no different, so, really kind of an attractive, attractive-looking store with good architectural features. Currently working on signage, I'm gonna back up real quick to this, we're proposing, this is still, uh, still working through this, um, with some sightlines and we'll be working with staff, but right now we're proposing one main monument sign, uh, at the corner, south-east corner here, and there's an existing shopping center sign up here as a north, uh, northeast corner there. Now let me switch back to the signage. Uh, so this is kind of the main Culver sign, um, changeable copy here with flavor of the day, as typical with Culvers. There could be at some point, uh, a future user on this sign if we combine it with a parcel in the north, if that's ever developed. Um, but right now, like I said, we're working through this, more details with the sign, and we'll be working with staff to, uh, ultimately submit something for permitting. This is just a, uh, picture of the sign in the north of the shopping center, uh, we'll be working with these folks too to kind of implement this sign and see what we can do with, you know, future user. Uh, this is just the landscaping plan right now, preliminary plan that shows quite a bit of landscaping around the perimeter of the site, interior of the site, uh, looking to meet code there. And with that, I'll turn it over to Matt, and you can kind of give a brief, brief overview of his operation.
Good evening, everyone, this is Rex Sedman, I'm Matthew Herman, I'm a franchisee for Culvers, I've worked in Culvers restaurants for the last twenty-one years, owned and drove about the last six. I grew up in Paleosites, I went through Paleos East and Paleos South Middle School, and, um, I'm really just looking forward to serving the community, partnering with local schools and organizations, and, uh, providing employment opportunities. Thank you.
Matt wants you, you, you have two operations already, don't you?
We do, we have two locations existing right now, um, we've been in Evergreen Park since two thousand thirteen, and then we built in Homer Glen about three and a half years ago, twenty twenty.
Great.
Man, I think the people would like you speaking into the microphone.
I apologize.
So, is there outdoor seating at this?
There are, there's four patio seating, uh, on the northeast corner of the building, and the drive-through staging area.
Oh, right, okay.
Did you say this building is forty-two hundred square feet?
Oh, forty-one hundred.
Is, is that, um, kind of standard, is that matched with your other stores, or is it what, a comparative size?
Yes.
Yeah. How many employees do you typically have?
Uh, working at one time, about ten to fifteen, um, total employee head count will hire about seventy to begin, and have a, kind of a, a maintained level around fifty to sixty.
Along the same lines, usually, where do they, uh, park?
They usually park the farthest they possibly can away from the exit to allow our guests to have the best proximity to the door.
Is it, are most of these people old enough, they have direct relations?
Most of them.
Or they probably all are?
Yes.
Yeah. And how many parking spots do you have for exterior?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three? Correct.
One more quick question, um, you're gonna be kind of close to Lake Catherine and the bike path there, do you have any plans to accommodate any bicycle or bicycle parking there?
Absolutely, we do have a bike rack, um, from my understanding of the bicycle traffic on the bike path there, we might need a second one, um, but yes, we do have opportunity to park bicycles, um, yes.
Okay, thanks.
I hope you get a great store, I hope everybody buys ice cream and hamburgers, I can't wait for you to open.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, or?
No samples?
Just like, just like to say thank you for choosing our town to open your business, and it's be a great asset, and I don't have to drive all the way to Crestwood anymore.
It's my pleasure.
Good luck.
Good luck. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Good luck.
All right, so next step is, uh, they go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so you're, you're set with that, so, very good. My first question, next step is turning the computer off. All right, well, thank you. Thanks, guys. All right, under consent calendar, we've got the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting from September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the approval of the payroll and the vouch, voucher list for the period ending October third, twenty twenty-five. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve set.
So move.
Move by Alderman Clifford.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman, uh, Scully, discussion, roll call.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Great, just under my general remarks, uh, I think it's great to see someone who grew up in our town come back and open a business, and, uh, especially, uh, it's, I know, I know Matt personally too, he's just a good guy and a hard worker, so, you know, make it really stick, so. Uh, just also, this, uh, tomorrow is the last day of the farmer's market, so just keep in mind, uh, and get your vegetables before, uh, the other, other, Alderman McGrogan has some vegetables, he's trying to get rid of out of his garden, but that's another story, but, uh, he's got just peppers on, uh, if, uh, so get out there today, you know, and support your local merchants and, uh, have a great time. Then I've got a number of appointments, and I'm going to, just for, in expediency, I think I'm just going to make one motion unless anyone has any objection to that. So, uh, I'll, I'll name the names and the terms, and then, uh, ask for a motion at the end, so, uh, point Jim, Jim Hughes to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term expiring ten seven twenty thirty, uh, John Hanley to the Planning and Zoning Commission to be actus chair for the five-year term expiring October seventh, twenty-third, uh, twenty thirty. Appoint Jack Shanahan to Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term expiring ten seven twenty thirty. Approve Tom, Thomas Gregory to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term expiring October seventh, twenty thirty. Uh, request approval of, uh, Tom, Bob Starzick for Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term expiring October seventh, twenty thirty. Uh, this will be a new one, request approval to appoint Declan Bittinger to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term expiring, uh, ten, I'm sorry, October seventh, twenty thirty. Uh, we'll appoint Todd Verbasco to the Planning, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals for a one-year term expiring October seventh, twenty twenty-six. Uh, re-approve, appoint, uh, Tom Gregory to Planning, to Zoning Board of Appeal for a five-year term expiring October seventh, twenty thirty. Uh, request the appointment, re-appointment of Jim Hughes to the Planning, Zoning Board of Appeals for its four-year term expiring October seventh, twenty twenty-nine. There's some typos here, so I'm gonna change these wordings here. Bob Starzick to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a seven-year term expiring October seventh, twenty thirty-two. Uh, Jack Shanahan to the Zoning Board of Appeals, one-year term expiring October seventh, twenty twenty-six, and John Hanley to a, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals for a five-year term, uh, from October seventh, twenty thirty. With that, I'll, the motion approved, make those improvements.
So move.
Move by Alderman Clifford, sir second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Begley, uh, roll call.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report tonight.
City treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the treasurer's report for the month ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. General fund began the month with five million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nineteen dollars. Revenue to the general fund was nine hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Expenses from the general fund, one million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Other source used, twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty. Ending cash in the general fund, five million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, nine forty-six. Total of all city funds, twenty-six million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, sixty-seven dollars was the starting balance. Revenues for the month were one million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty. Uh, expenses, two million, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, twenty-three dollars. Other source used, seventy-nine thousand, nine oh nine, giving an ending cash balance in all city funds, twenty-six million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, five thirty-four. Uh, other than that, no updates on the, you haven't heard anything, Bob, about, uh, property tax bills?
Nope.
So, uh, the residents obviously are frustrated, we, our revenues come in later, it seems like December, January, before we start taking those receipts in. We're just staying a little more liquid than just putting in CDs, some of it for certain money markets to bridge the gap, but, uh, strong reserves will help get us through, so, that's it.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add to that, uh, Cook County has also established a fund where municipalities can apply to, to receive interest-free loans, uh, bridging the gap to the, uh, property taxes, and, and the latest information out of Cook County is those are coming out soon with a deadline of November thirtieth, whether they come out in the middle of this month or by November first, but that's the expectation, but.
Yeah, and those ones, you know, that, uh, fund they have established is truly important to, say, the, uh, fire districts and the library, because they, actually their only source of income is real estate taxes for the most part, so, uh, whereas this is over the whole course of, uh, our enterprise zones also too. Yes, sir.
Um, I think some of the people have inquired, um, about why, and I, um, I've heard, I did some, I made some calls, and, um, I don't know if any of the other aldermen or maybe Brent might even know, um, that they actually, uh, were like, um, uh, like using a, they decided to speed things up, they were gonna use a, um, it's not that big a deal, yeah.
Please stand.
That's on your phone.
I mean, it's not my phone, by the way. So, uh, they hired a, uh, outside vendor that they thought would do a better job in, uh, expediting the taxes, and it turned out that it was over their, their skis or something, they couldn't actually handle it, and they actually went out of business. So I think if, uh, the information that I'm getting is correct, that's the delay. Anyhow, I don't know that many people that are really that disappointed about not paying your tax bill a little later, so, anyhow, that's the total history.
All right, with that, entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
So move.
Move by Alderman Scully, seconded by Alderman Key, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, uh, city attorney?
Uh, thank you, no report.
Uh, any communications?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, I just wanted to say that the, the Payless, uh, Women's Club is having a blood drive next week on the fifteenth, and it's from, uh, two o'clock to six-thirty PM at the rec center, and if, uh, you'd like, they, they'd like you to, um, make an appointment, and you can call this number, one eight hundred, seven eight six, four four, eight three, one eight hundred, seven eight six, four four, eight three, and we'll get you signed up, and that's a good cause.
Great, thanks, Jeff, appreciate it.
One other thing, uh, uh, last week on Thursday, the city clerk Shannon, uh, Alderman, uh, Scully and myself went to an Ashtala, um, uh, HOA meeting, and, uh, it was a nice meeting, uh, they had a lot of nice things to, uh, talk about and some good ideas, but they also, uh, in case there's Ashtala residents, um, watching, uh, uh, the cable, uh, channel, that they're looking for s, more people to, uh, pay their HOA dues. We said we'd mention that.
Because they haven't paid the real estate taxes, you can pay the dues, I don't know, okay, all right, just, it's not a trade-off or anything like that.
Significant difference in money.
One other update, uh, Ms. Ray, about, um, state rep Mary Gill is organizing another, uh, drive at our rec center to, for driver's license registration. It was really helpful in the past, um, instead of having to go to a facility, so, um, I don't have the exact date, but we'll report it, we've shared it on the website, and you have to contact, um, state rep Mary Gill's office to make the appointment, but again, look on the Paleosites website where we're sharing this information.
Yeah, and then, I've done that, to be fast, and it's, takes five minutes as opposed to waiting in line, so, yes, sir.
Uh, just, uh, let everybody know, next month, uh, Veterans Day, the rec department will be holding their annual, uh, breakfast for the veterans, and I'm hoping Alderman Key will honor this with his, uh,
He's wanting me to sing?
Dance.
Jubil and stuff like that for, but anyway, uh, if you are interested, say, call the rec center, you have to put your name down, because it's, it's gotten to a point where it's got pretty filled and, and sold out, getting good response, so, you just call up there, get, ask them to put your name on the list, everything's free there, there's giveaways, they've got a lot of people that donated things for the veterans. Also working with McDonald's that offered to put, go in a partnership with the event, to do things for the local vets, that's maybe stop and get a hamburger or something like that, that information will be forthcoming, and the other thing is, I was asked for some residents, uh, did anybody out there, as you notice, it's getting darker earlier out there, and to be aware of your surroundings on the streets, especially with the little ones, and people going to school, walking the side of the roads, and obey the speed limits that are posted out there, they're, on the residential streets, they're twenty miles an hour, not forty, and we got kids running around out there, and you have to be more aware, and we got another holiday coming up where those children will be exposed to Halloween, so just, just a heads up to that, be aware of your surroundings on that, and, uh, that's about it for right now, Ms. Ray.
Great, thanks, anyone else? All right, citizens wishing to address the council?
Yes, I'm Linda Miller, I live at a hundred, uh, seventy-two twenty-eight, one hundred and twenty-fifth street, and I just need to, um, uh, to express my appreciation to the city for their prompt action regarding the outdoor lighting problem, um, I've had, again, uh, at the suite of offices adjacent to my property, uh, once again, the city has stepped up for me, and I just want to public, publicly thank Alderman Lewandowski and, um, Commissioner Giordano.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And, uh, was there someone else there that day when we were all at the site?
There, there was, but I forgot who it is.
Okay, well, I want to thank him too, you know, because I appreciate the efforts for setting the matter straight, you know, so quickly, and, um, so, that's it, I just wanted to say thank you for, again, helping me out, this isn't the first time I've been up here, so, thank you for listening.
You're welcome, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Linda Skiappa, one three four four two Edinburgh Drive, obviously Paleos Heights. Um, I'm here representing the Public Arts Committee today, um, I, and, and this might be a new point, but I feel like I need to speak about this, before the vote is taken, just in case anybody has any questions. Alderman Begley, I'd like to thank you for your heads up this morning with your text message, I tr, I sincerely appreciate it because I wasn't blindsided totally. Um, but just to give a brief history, the Public Arts Committee in April started, um, discussing the purchase of a new piece for Lights in the Heights, um, from Artistic Holiday Designs. We then went to the Beautification Committee and presented them with, um, a few pieces, and they settled on this six-and-a-half-foot-tall 3D angel, and they gave us a contribution to it, and initially, when I was going at it, um, the other pieces that we purchased, when we first started Lights in the Heights, um, they were on a lease-to-buy program, and I had the lease price of five thousand, eighty-seven dollars and some change, I should have it written down, but I don't, anyway, I'm sorry, um, come to find out that, that lease-to-buy program was no longer available, so the only option was either just to lease it, or to purchase it outright for twelve thousand, seven hundred and, I left my piece of paper at home, um, twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars and some change to purchase it outright. We then started talking to people that we know about trying to find additional funding, um, I had reached out to my alderman, and the city did approve additional funding to Public Arts for that purchase. Uh, before the, uh, Buildings and Grounds meeting in, so this took place over the summer between July and August. August meeting was canceled for Buildings and Grounds, so the next opportunity, we had to present this at the Buildings and Grounds for them to pass it, was in September, and, um, once again, I reiterated, oh, no, I'm sorry, um, Tara, another member of the committee had called, had gotten actually a better deal, a twenty- deal, a twenty percent discount on a piece that they had in stock for a refurbished piece, and that was the only conversation at Buildings and Grounds that was discussed of any concern, not a concern about the actual piece or the purchase of it. And then I got a, a text message from Alderman Begley saying that she could no longer, this morning, that she could no longer support the purchase of this piece. And I'm just confused because I went to two Buildings and Grounds Committees. It was reported on in our Public Arts Minutes for, since April, really, we've talked about this. It was discussed at the Beautification Committee meeting, and if, you know, I was told that, by Alderman Begley, that there's a, a piece that you can buy an angel for two hundred dollars. I don't know what kind of piece, the two hun, I don't know what you were looking at, and I, I did a Google search. The only thing I could find was a piece for two hundred and forty-four dollars that was five feet tall, and it was not illuminated, and it was just a, a generic piece. These pieces are crafted by a lighting company from France. It's been in business for over a hundred years. The frames are all aluminum. They're warranted. They take down the pieces. They reinstall them. They store them. They make sure that everything is working. So, I don't, we're talking about buying a piece from Home Depot versus buying a piece of this quality. It's a commercial-grade piece. It's not, it's not, it's what many communities around us have on display. So, we're not comparing apples to apples. We're not even comparing apples to oranges. I mean, I don't even know what we're comparing it to because it's not of the same quality. And I just wanted to point that out. And, you know, as far as, you know, fundraising money, I'm, I'm all for fundraising money. I've been fundraising money for this community for thirty-five years, and I can say I've been a part of raising hundreds of thousands of dollars because just for the PFA, one year, we raised over a hundred thousand dollars. I raised money for the Beautification Committee, for the Women's Club, for, I, I'm drawing a blank right now, but a lot of money for the nine-eleven memorial out in front. I've spent my life fundraising. I've spent my money, my life donating money to this community, and, um, I'm just a little upset. I sound upset because I am upset because I don't think it's, it's right that at the last second that this shouldn't be saying, eh, just go out and raise some money, because it's not that easy. So, I would challenge anybody sitting as an Alderman on the Buildings and Grounds to help us raise money, how, put us, connect us with people that have deep pockets, that can donate, because I'll tell you now, that people look at me, and they're like, huh, I'm not gonna talk to Linda because she's always asking for money. So, maybe somebody else that's new, fresh, has other, other outlets, other pockets to, to pick, maybe you could help. And I'd be willing to do whatever needs to be done, to go ask that person, beg that person. I've done it for many, many years. I don't have a problem asking people for money. I just don't. The well is dry for me. I don't have any more people. And we are, right now, are a committee of three. So, it's not like we can throw on this big fundraiser and say, hey, you know, come donate, because we are, and, and one has just had surgery today, so we're really down to two. We're not a big committee. That's all I'm gonna say. Thank you for listening. I appreciate it. Oh, anyways, I don't know if you, I meant to bring a picture. I don't know if you all want to look it up online. I, she's beautiful. The wings are all lit. She's sculptural. Her hair is lit. She's fully lit. It's guaranteed. It's, she's a beautiful piece. Anyways, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Anyone else have any questions? If not, perv standing committees. Alderman McGrogan.
Mr. Mayor, we have one item. It's an easy one, I think. Item twenty-three is a motion to adopt an ordinance authorizing the sale of a certain personal property owned by the city of Payless Heights. It's a twenty-twenty Chevy Tahoe with a VIN number that ends in two-seven-six-six, and also we are going to dispose of a twenty-fifteen Chevy Tahoe, uh, VIN number ending in two-one-one-two.
Motion by Alderman McGrogan is your second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Brennan. Discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that's the end.
Thank you. Alderman Bassow?
Uh, yes, Mayor. I have no items on the agenda this evening. Thank you.
All right. Just grounds of property. Alderman Begley.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I start with my first motion, I did just want to add to what Linda said and identify that the Finance Committee did approve in the budget additional funding for this angel, so there is funding for it. And then there is the Beautification Committee funding, so it is covered. I just found that the price of this particular six-foot angel is remarkably high, so I'm going to call it for a motion. We can vote. Everyone can support it, but I just personally just think it's, it's an astronomical price. I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the purchase of a refurbished six-foot 3D angel from Artistic Holly Design in the amount of ten thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars and twenty-six cents.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Begley, seconded by Alderman Key. Discussion?
Is this, uh, new refurbished or?
It's refurbished.
And if we do go ahead and buy it, uh, at a refurbished rate, does it come with any kind of warranties or guarantees or anything like that for X amount of number of years?
It does.
On defects of workmanship?
It does. Part of what Linda just mentioned is that when they store these things, they're kind of responsible for, they make sure that they're, all the lights are working and they're installed and taken and stored.
We store them. We store them.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I meant, I meant, I meant from the manufacturer, not from...
It's a two-year warranty once, because it's refurbished, it's, we have a two-year...
Standard, then.
Yeah.
All right.
But just so we're clear, we store it. They don't store it. Yeah.
Discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, so, um, I thi, the Beautification Committee has really supported this idea of the whole Lights in the Heights that the Art Commission has done. I think it's a beautiful display. I think it's a, a real positive thing for the, for the city of Payless Heights. They're definitely friends of Payless Heights. And so, the Beautification Committee enthusiastically gave them the money for the down payment of this thing because we didn't want to lose the opportunity because it, it's not easy to get. It's an industrial kind of application, and I think it's gonna be a real good addition to the, to the light show.
All right. One more thing. I respect Alderman Begley's concerns and their, and the amount and trying to be fiscally responsible for it and everything, but since they're saying it's a beast in confusion, I'd just like to say, well, why don't we just go ahead and approve it for this year and take a real look at how we do these things in the future as far as cost and things going and the necessity of it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think if I understand it correctly, correctly, and maybe the people on grounds could correct it, I think we are gonna own it, Alderman.
Yeah.
We're gonna own it. So, it, it's not just gonna be a one-year deal, Alderman Clifford. I think we're gonna have it. We're paying for it upfront. It's ours.
I think Alderman Clifford is just referring to future purchases.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Like, 'cause, 'cause we've been adding on every year.
If we get a second angel.
So, we just can't have like, yeah.
Just as a reminder too, several years ago, the Beautification Committee purchased a, a tree for the municipal, a Christmas tree, and understanding that it's a much bigger piece of art, but it's twelve thousand dollars or even more than that. I mean, these things are very expensive, and they're expensive for a reason.
Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
No.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Good.
Motion carries. Next, I have a motion to approve the purchase of four cameras from Midwest Digital AV Incorporated for the City Council Chambers in the amount of eight thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Begley, seconded by Alderman Clifford. Discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
And then finally, this evening, I have a motion to authorize the city attorney and the city staff to negotiate a master license agreement between the city of Payless Heights and Clearwave Fiber.
Moved Alderman Begley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Brennan. Discussion? Just as a point of information, I got an email today that the, the metropolitan mayor's caucus, which I'm on the board of, which is a caucus of, uh, about four hundred cities in the metropolitan Chicago area, and there's twelve of us on the board, and they're looking at coming up some type of master agreement for, because all these, all these towns now are getting inundated by these new mic, uh, microwave, uh, fiber, uh, people wanting to put them in, and how do you, how do you control them? How do you make them sure, we had the same problem here. When they put it in, make sure the landscaping gets replaced, uh, you know, is there a way you can get a, a tax of a franchise fee and stuff like that? So, that's being investigated. So, that should help in the negotiation of these ordinances.
Are we getting any kind of fees from that?
That's, at the point, at this point, no. That's, that's the, that's what this, this will come down to.
Nothing right now.
Right.
But when, when I remember, the committee was said, if there is gonna be, when work transpires, there's gonna be some digging on property for those people that request the, the service, and that those, uh, we discussed that, that those holes and digging would be replaced ASAP.
Right.
Basically with, uh, grass mant rather than sod.
Right. Well, and part of the problem we had last time was the, the, the frequency or the timing when they actually did, did replace it. So, I've asked, short of having this ordinance in place or this agreement, is to when someone comes in and tries to do something like that, we ask them to post a bond so we can draw upon it if they don't do it right away, which we did have this problem.
And this is on a request-only basis for you?
This is on a request-only. These are gonna be, the, the people are looking to take over a, a number of different, uh, you know, Comcast and, and the like. This is what's happening. The fibers are going through towns, and it's not gonna be just one person ordering fibers. They're, they're, they're looking to put it in throughout the whole town, so, so it's, it's a bigger thing. It's gonna be on the, on the forefront, so, so we need to get a, upfront here, so.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is this gonna be underground?
Yes.
Yes.
How do they get under the driveways and stuff?
They, they bore it.
Bore it?
Yeah.
Directional bore, go down, under a vehicle.
So, there'll be minimum, minimum?
Well, well, in some cases, yeah, but there could be some dam, some damage. So, that, that's what, that's what we're looking to protect the residents and the businesses, so. All right.
So, we just need to vote on that.
Yeah, mo, need a motion to vote?
I believe we got it, Brennan. Okay. Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
And that is the end of my report this evening. Thank you.
Planning and zoning, Alderman Scully?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple items for my committee tonight. First, I, before I bring it to a motion, I, I have been asked to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance for a special-use permit to operate an urgent medical facility for the Elite Medical LLC with the condition that an annual sum be paid in lieu of taxes. Uh, but prior to bringing that to a motion, I'd like to know if the applicant would like to bring it, make a statement in front of the council.
Hi, I'm Alakasim. I'm the CFO of Elite Med Urgent Care. My brother, which is the CMO, he's not here. He is a resident of Payless Heights. We're looking to open, or urgent care? Yeah, that's my, yes, thank you. We're looking to open an urgent care in the Seven-Eleven right on Harlem and College Drive. It's, we're mainly looking at a strictly urgent care. Uh, we do have already one facility in Hickory Hills on Ninety-Fifth and Roberts. Our plan, if it gets approved, is about five to six exam rooms, one x-ray room, a lab room, and then a couple offices, um, for the doctors and stuff. So, the main doctor is the resident, which is Dr. Cosim. He is the one that would be mainly there. We do have five MDs that we employ currently at our other facility. Um, other than them, we have about ten to twelve medical assistants that we're looking to hire for this location strictly alone. At any given point of time, usually we would have three employees, which is the medical provider plus two medical assistants that are there.
Uh, to the question, um, you, do you understand what we were talking about in lieu of taxes?
Yes.
That's the retail sales tax that a retail business would generate that helps pay the city's cost of expenses?
Yes, and redevelopment.
And redevelopment. And, uh, being that said, that was, usually, we ask if you would be willing, uh, to, to work with us on that, to keep some of those in. Have you discussed that or thought about that or?
Yeah, we, I, I thought about it a lot. I discussed it with, with my brother, uh, who is the CMO, discussed it with, um, Alderman Scully also, um, and we're all for it. We'll do everything that we can within the means that we are able to do.
You understand the point there.
Hundred percent.
Because what, that was a sole-owned retail and generated retail sales tax, and it's just a, an agreement that we're asking back to be requiring, but asking if you'd be willing to do that.
Yes. Um, we're, we are willing to do it as, um, if we could come to an understanding. Of course, at the end of the day, it is a business, so we do have to look at the business interest. If we are able to make that commitment, a hundred percent, we're willing to do it.
So, what we're gonna, what Alderman Scully, in the panel here, I think it's gonna do is just ask, so you understand this, is to draft the ordinance?
Yes.
What it is, and then in two weeks, see what kind of, uh, settlement or that, and then if that was agreed for to, if it comes forward, well, it'll be adopted in two weeks then.
Correct.
It'll be brought before the council for a vote.
Yes.
Do you understand that?
Yes.
When you said the, uh, medical provider, is that, uh, an MD or is it?
Yes. So, the owner and, um, he's the, an MD. We have four MDs that we, um, work with or are employed by us, including the owner, and then we have one physician assistant, but she does strictly work at our Hickory Hills location. Um, but currently, right now, we're only thinking of MD.
So, you have a MD there all the time then?
Yeah. MD, uh, we don't have any DOs, so it's always MD.
Either one, yeah.
Yeah, right now strictly MD.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Now, that requires, it's a special use requirement, so to be just the correct.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We also, at the planning and zoning meeting, when they appeared and spoke to the members of the committee, uh, we asked them a bunch of questions, and, um, it's really, I think, a, a good thing for the community in general because, um, the, uh, Payless Hospital, which is now Northwestern Payless Hospital, has been really busy, especially in the emergency room, and I think we've, you know, all know people that have had occurrences to go there, and it takes a while. And so, if you look at the lists that they, you know, were nice enough to provide, um, there's a lot of things here that I think, you know, people could run in there for, and I don't know if you have any comments about people you do see, but, I mean, I'm very familiar with people spending five, six hours waiting in the emergency room at the hospitals, and, um, you know, it's just, and there's more and more people going to the hospitals because we have more and more people running around.
Yeah. So, we're not here to replace the hospital by any means. We're the bridge. So, we're not here to replace the primary. The primary is there for you to go for your annuals, stuff like that, but we're there when something comes up, it's an emergency, at this time, you're not able to see your primary at any time. You're not able to call that primary doctor. That's what we're there for. If it's something small as a flu, as big as a laceration, even chest pains or whatever it is, we're there to handle it as best as we can. We're there to utilize our, um, staff, our, um, degree of experience there. And then if we have to, we can always send them out to the hospital, but we'll always get that treatment there. Currently, right now, we do work with Northwestern as our lab provider, so at our Hickory Hills location, Northwestern is our lab provider. All the blood draws, everything that we test for that is not done in-house is always sent to Northwestern. So, we are looking for, we are expecting them to come with us here for our blood, uh, or labs, as we will say. So, any type of diagnostics, la, laboratory stuff, Northwestern is our people that we utilize in Hickory Hills, and we're seeing them coming in here. Um, but yeah, we are in acute, immediate care. Yes, we do have an MD. Uh, the owner is specialized in ER and, um, ortho, so he, or sports medicine, I'm sorry. We have another doctor, Dr. Antoine Sufi. He is our pain management doctor. He works for Cook County in John Stroger, and then we have Dr. Martez Abbas. He is our, uh, one of our bigger people. He works for OSF in Peoria, comes here three days, moonlights every other week. He is our board-certified internal medicine and teaching doc. All of our MDs are board-certified, either in family medicine, internal medicine, or sports medicine. Um, and we're here, what we see in Hickory Hills, I can kind of give you guys examples. We are quick, but we do have some instances where we get some severity. Quick as in, our average time now is twenty-six minutes in and out. From the time that they walk through the door, from the time they leave the, the clinic, is twenty-six minutes. Our longest times go up to forty, forty-five minutes. Those are patients that are coming in super dehydrated or need a little bit more severity of tests, as in echo or AKG or an x-ray or something like that. Um, but I know the, one of the big issues was parking and stuff like that. We... that, um, but I know the, one of the big issues was parking and stuff like that, we really work really hard to get patients in and out, that's the reason urgent cares exist, is because when you have a flu, you don't wanna go to an ER and sit there for five hours, or pay that copay of a hundred and fifty dollars, when an ER or your PCP is just twenty bucks, fifteen bucks of copay, and you're in and out within twenty-five, twenty-six minutes.
For the benefit of the balance of the council and those viewing at home, what are your hours of operation?
So Hickory Hills is eight to ten every single day, we don't have any days off, but we're looking for, at, um, Payless Heights, it's nine AM to ten PM, seven days, no days off also.
Just, just to be clear on the, on the labs, someone comes in, they're just in a lot of pain?
Yeah.
Maybe appendix, gallbladder, you, you don't do a blood draw there?
Yes, that, that's why we use Northwestern, we do blood draws in-house, they come and collect the blood draws at the end of the night, at ten fifteen.
But if someone's, but if someone's in a distress?
Yes, so that always comes back to the doctor, so distress as in, in your instance, if we're thinking appendicitis or something like that, um, of course, we'll take care of them in the best way that we can, but if the doctor thinks it's something severe, that's what the ER is for, we call ambulance, we keep them here, we get them stabilized and then we move on.
Okay.
But if you're talking about stat labs, we do have stat labs, um, as in a iStat machine, that is ten minutes we can get, um, if you're having a heart attack, seizure or something like that, stat labs, yes, but appendicitis, stuff like that, um, we, we don't see those, we're more of trying to catch a little bit more severity.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, uh, I received a number of emails from my constituents about, um, this proposed zoning change, and a number of the concerns have been addressed already this evening, um, some of the concerns, um, the loss of the sales tax revenue, uh, in lieu of that sales tax revenue, um, of, uh, uh, monetary amount to be determined, paid to the, to the city, um, that you are not replacing, uh, Northwa- Payless Northwestern Hospital, you are supplementing, you, you are focusing on urgent care, so, um, uh, with a, with a expectancy of a twenty-six minute duration of their visit, um, and then, which leads into parking, um, so in addition to a twen- uh, average of about, in your other facility, twenty-six minutes for, for the visit, have you taken a look of exactly where this, um, your, your storefront will be positioned, and how the parking would be affected by the other restaurants, so you have Giuliani's at one end of the, of the mall, and then you have Jimmy John's and so on, so a number of, um, restaurants in the middle, so can you talk a little bit about, if you looked at the actual parking spots?
Yeah, so I, I, before we even thought about going into that spot, we, we did our due diligence, I sat in that parking lot for seven days, the doctor passes by that location every single day from going to work, coming back home from work, um, it, it is, I would say, slight issue for parking, not severe issue, I would say, uh, just because Jimmy John's is on one side, Jimmy John's is in and out, usually very rarely people are sitting, um, you got, the other side is, is where we see a little bit more of the congestion, but on that side where, in the perfect corner of College and, and Harlem, that is always empty, all the time, I sat there for seven days, um, about six hours a day at different various times, and I always found a spot, not, never had to take a loop, so I, I think the parking is not a really a big issue for us, they'll be in and out, I think the person, people that are gonna go in for, to have dinner are gonna take lo- a lot longer by the time they, we have a hun- a hundred people in and out before they can get out, I think we would have easily replaceable, it's not like you think a hundred people are coming in at once, it's throughout the whole day, you know, we have, we're, we're looking at thirteen hours, they're not all gonna come in at once, I think our average right now is forty-five in the Hickory Hills, forty-five to fifty per day, but that's not once, you don't have fifty cars in the parking lot that one time.
That's forty-five to fifty patients per day?
Yeah, that's our approximate average, of course, one day we'll have a lot more, like a Saturday or Sunday, we'll have a lot more because most PCPs are closed, um, and then, you know, some, like Mondays, usually busy, people are coming in right after work, and then Tuesdays, Thursdays are usually kinda slowed down, but yeah, our averages are forty-five patients a day.
I have a quick question, there are two questions, actually, do you have any intent to expand within that, that strip mall there, or that mall there?
Um, if, if the opportunity happens, yes, of course, twenty-four, we're looking at twenty-five hundred square feet right now, what we're looking at, um, our place in Hickory Hills is eight thousand square feet, but it is cut into two, so for urgent care, we're using about three thousand square feet currently.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, of course, the more rooms, more spaces, more exam rooms that we have is a lot better, more, uh, additional lab rooms or stuff like that that we can have, definitely is always welcome, so yeah, if there's an opportunity for us to expand to another spot, definitely take that opportunity.
And with that in mind, just because I do love the idea of an urgent care in town, I think it's, it's a good idea, um, have you guys considered any other locations, maybe like a larger freestanding building, has that already kinda been in the?
Yeah, we, we thought about that too, but that location is very hard to be, to be honest with you, um, with urgent care, of course, everybody has their phones, Google's really easy to use now, you just type in urgent care near me and you'll see where you're going, but, um, that location is super hard to be, it's right in the beginning of Payless Heights, one of the busiest, uh, streets in Payless Heights, so, and it's the most easily, I would say, accessible from surrounding cities too.
Okay, and then from like an aesthetic purpose, I think a lot of residents who have voiced concerns, that, that has kind of a, um, the personality of Payless Heights from when people are younger, you kinda remember Mona Lisa there, you remember different shops there, so it's kind of was more of like a commercial building, it's got these nice white pane windows, um, aesthetically, what would you be envisioning in that area?
So?
To maintain patient privacy, things like that, would it change that look?
Like, you mean the outside?
Mm-hmm.
Not really, no, like, with ours in Hickory Hills, we didn't do anything but put a sign and then, of course, the pri- the glass, we put, um, our services, basically what you see there on every single glass, but that's really about it, but with this one, just because depending on how our architect works, the plan inside, um, the windows might be most likely tinted, uh, completely for a closeout for privacy.
Okay.
But that's the only aesthetically difference that we would do, and then just signage.
Thank you.
A, a point of information on the, uh, idea of expansion, should you, you, you go down that path at some point in the future, you'd have to get a, 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 a brand new special use permit?
Yes.
This is not transferable?
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
Okay, any other questions? I'm sorry?
Um, having just approved the move forward with a major fast food franchise, I would suspect that, that automatically, um, opens up more opportunities and, and more visions for more people to proceed with possible relocating or locating at, at the site we're talking about now, um, I would, I would certainly love to see it continue to be, uh, a commercial endeavor, I don't think the property's given really enough market time to determine that there's a problem with that location, I think the location now is gonna be so much more desirable, uh, soon as the Culvers is up and running, there'll be so many more, uh, visitors there, there'll be so much more traffic there, there'll be so much more of just a vision from, from the Culvers restaurant across the street to that mall, just say that, hey, maybe I should walk over there when I'm done, or maybe we should try that over there, I don't think that's gonna happen with, uh, another medical facility in Payless Heights, we're talking about a city plan, and, uh, I think we have enough non-commercial situations already established in the city, uh, where we have a, a very minimum amount of commercial activity on, on Harlem Avenue Business District as it is, I would much rather see a, a commercial endeavor there, give it some time and see what develops, see what happens, especially if it lasts as long as, um, it takes to build a Culvers, I mean, get, Culvers gets up and running, it's gonna be a whole different corner, and we have a, we have a phone store on one side of the street that gets one customer at a time, we got a paint store there that gets one customer at a time.
The paint, the paint store is one of our biggest.
Yeah, I know, it's been there a long time, so they must sell something, but.
They sell a lot, it's one of our bigger improvements.
You know, they're going there for a gallon of paint or something, they're not gonna go, but, I, and you know what I'm talking about, if you look at the dri- the, the parking lot in the particular, uh, center we're talking about, I'm amazed at how full that it, that parking lot is, especially in the evening, I mean, there's an awful lot of activity there, and, um, that's just an opinion, it's, I think it's another vision for the, for the future, it's just locking out one more space for a commercial possibility.
Any other questions? All right.
I don't have a, I don't have a question, but I agree with everything Alderman Vassal just said, that this is the, if you had to pick a couple spots in town and say, where do you want retail?
Yeah.
To, 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 you know, someone walk, uh, coming into town, what do you want them to see, retail, and, um, I know that, uh, retail, uh, environment has changed over the last twenty years, but, um, I think we, you know, especially when we're, we're gonna hire a design group to help us with the, uh, with our business district, we're trying to attract, um, retail, and so I think, you know, we, 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 we wanna protect spaces for retail.
The, uh, I have to agree, when I first heard of Culvers, which was today, and seeing it, I knew the one gentleman, the owner of the store, and I'm glad to see him there, it's gonna change that corner completely, it's, it's like the envision that we had across the street, uh, with the nice, with, uh, pavers and the walk extension to the bike path, that whole corner was being called the access or point of view, the entrance to our town, so with that is, is, I was just wondering, should it be, even, uh, with the new company we hired to show us a new vision of, to move forward out of town, is put a moratorium on, making a new business, so we get an opinion from them, and certain busi- uh, businesses when it come in that might, may or may not reflect what we actually want, being known we're getting new businesses like Culvers and things like that, and the possibility of that corner over on the other side being redeveloped.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, I have a different viewpoint, so two thousand and one, when I joined the committee, um, and I just happened to be looking for something else, and I happened to run across an article, and the article was in the regional, and it said, you know, that, uh, the mayor was just coming in, Alderman Clifford, some, myself, some other people, um, came in, and one of the big things was, they said, like, on the question answers, was what are you gonna do with the corner of eighty-three and Harlem, which is basically what, at the time, was the riser, you know, property that was vacant, you know, subsequently, now we have the, um, uh, you know, senior? Senior assistant living, uh, operation, and really, no other commercial, this was in two thousand and one, that, like, that corner, um, and I, and most of the people that were interviewed in the article said, we'd love to see that thing get developed quickly, because it was one of our best entrances to the city, still is, and, um, so, but I, you know, over the years, we've had other people, like the, these leasing brokers, that come in and have talked to us, when we've been evaluating different sites, and I don't think it's a lack of, um, retailers, like, that aren't, that aren't looking at Payless Heights, they're looking, but somehow or another, when they look at the demographics of our town, a lot of them just choose not to locate, I mean, for a long time, Starbucks wouldn't come here, we, we begged them for a long time, and so my point is that, and I do, I know there's a leasing broker in the audience, I think he might be associated with your, your assistants here, that, like, to somebody's point, like Alderman Vassal's point, is, like, how long, like, or I wish this person who owned Seven-Eleven was, or the, the shopping center owner was here, because then we could ask them directly, but how long were they actually out looking for other people other than your medical facility? Um, I mean, I, I think the medical facility's a good idea personally, but, I mean, um, it's no question, it's a good corner, but I, I don't think that they're the only ones, and they just jumped on it, I wouldn't be surprised if they looked at quite a few, uh, companies and they all said no, I, it's just my own opinion, but, I, I know a little bit about that business.
Mr. Mayor, very quickly, how long is that storefront, when did Seven-Eleven move out, or, or vacate the?
Two years.
I, I, I'm the leasing broker for Retail Center, it's okay?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Neil Hollem with Network Real Estate, uh, Seven-Eleven is still on the hook for their lease until the end of this month, um, it's, it's ideal to have retail, it generates a lot of sales tax, but the new terminology now in, in the real estate industry, it's called med tail, it's medical and retail together, they work so great together, Amazon, eBay, all that hurt the retail business, that's why Mona Lisa's not there anymore, and they tried to downsize, they just couldn't compete, I'm not saying that everything should be medical, or everything should be retail, but the blend works great together, it's been proven, it's, it's been done in several suburbs around you, um, it's a great corner, I don't disagree with, but it's a twenty-five hundred square foot retail space in the shopping center, that shopping center before it was built used to be a gas station on that corner years ago, so maybe you recall, um, and when you build a shopping center, it would be suicide to build an empty shopping center and tell them, okay, let's bring tenants in here, so what's done, it's built on, on the, on the contingency that all these tenants are gonna go in, well, ten years later, businesses change, people move out, people move in, so it's not built for that same use all the time, it's gotta, it, it's gotta be flexible, and fifty, it's fifty for, fifty-two percent retail right now, and if I bring another restaurant in there, all we're doing is cannibalizing another restaurant, uh, Seven-Eleven closed for a reason, they're expanding into the gas business where you go in there, get your gas, get your, uh, grocers, uh, whatever, uh, convenience store items, um, that works, but the convenience store is a thing of the past, Walgreens became the big, big convenience store, and now they're downsizing, I, it's, I just hate to put another retailer in there to cannibalize another retailer, so what are the choices you have, restaurants, uh, some retail, but what retail actually works there, other than a convenience store, which they don't wanna go there anymore, um, it's just, it's just difficult to generate the amount of, uh, retail that you would get if you were to tax, have a gas tax on the gas stations in, in the town or something, it would, you would generate more re- more, uh, revenue from that than you would by trying to charge an, an excise, uh, excise tax to, uh, uh, for medical use coming in, the rewards would be much more having the med tail together, and all the businesses survive together, they, they, the, the, uh, employees live in town, buy in town, shop in town.
In the eighteen months or two years it's been vacant, how many specialty retailers approached?
It hasn't been vacant that long.
Well, how long has it been?
About six months.
Six months, uh, how many specialty retailers?
Foods, all of them have been food users, and it was, um, uh, mostly new chains coming into town, but again, restaurants want quick serve, the Culvers, yeah, he's not here, but he'll tell you, he can't survive without a drive-through, you put a restaurant there and try to do high volume, it's not gonna make it without a drive-through, um, we, a- a, a, as a landlord, as a representative of the landlord, he wants all the businesses in his building to survive, so you don't wanna, we have, like I said, we have three restaurants, if you put another restaurant, and that's really what's, the economy's based on right now, is the fast food industry's driving, the car washes, and the fat, fast food industry, um, I, I just don't think it's a negative thing, I'm not here to pose, or, 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 uh, or, or, I'm sorry, to object to what you guys are, are thinking, but it does make sense, it will bring more tax dollars to your town, it's been proven.
Uh, when Seven-Eleven left, they were due, because they were all bought out by Speedway Motor Company, correct?
Correct, and Seven-Eleven actually tried to move across the street, the site across the street, it, it didn't happen.
Well, that didn't happen.
They're not closing their locations.
That's because of, uh, the change of venues, of, uh, Speedway buying out all those gas stations and, and then it didn't fit into their plan.
No, I, I represented Seven-Eleven on a few transactions, no, that's not the reason.
What would you think of a, there was gonna be a, a, uh, store owner called Pride Stores, Pride Stores, they're in Hinsdale, Potavia?
Right, 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 the gas, gas operators.
You're familiar with them?
Yes.
Uh, what would you think the feasibility if something like that was marketed to go into that spot, you think that would survive over there?
You're talking about across the street now, right?
The pride, if a place like Pride Stores was to go into the spot we're talking about, do you think?
Oh, I thought you were talking about Pride, there's a gas station.
No, not the gas, the gas thing, just the Pride Stores, they're a convenience store, they're a high-end, up-to-date?
We've, we've talked to Circle K, we've, we've talked to Go Grocers, we've, we, we, I got, I'm going to a show on Thursday, I, uh, that.
You've talked to all of them?
I've talked to all of them, the only offers we, we were coming in were food-related, um, there is not really a parking issue. is not really a parking issue in the shopping center. There's a parking issue if you want to park right on Harlem, on 100, at the, where the Jimmy John's in. But if you go in the shopping, plenty of parking. I think of maybe 200 spaces there. Yeah, some businesses, on a Friday night, Giuliani's might get busy or anything. But most of the businesses are in and out. We had the Pilate place in there, they relocated down the street. Now, they were taking a lot of the parking space. They had dedicated parking in front of the space. And so we have service, and we have retail, and they work great together. It's not going to eliminate any sales tax revenue. I, I think if you actually came back here in a year, and we, and we calculate, you'll see that it generated more revenue. It's been proven throughout the industry.
Yeah, well, my point is, I hate to negate and give away places that did, in the past, generate some type of revenue to the city. Because the city operates on, well, small to large revenues, all in one pot, helps us.
And those people?
So every piece we give away, we don't get back. That's why.
No, but you're getting, you're getting employees that work there. They're going to shop and move into town.
Believe me, I've heard that story a million times, that the guy with the bad back will rush right over to this place, go over here and buy some. That doesn't happen all the time. My big, my big concern is, is that that property would generate some kind of revenue to us in sales tax, one way or the other. Whether an agreement has worked out or another, but we have a couple of weeks to disseminate that.
Fifty-one percent of the tenants in there are retail.
Pardon?
Oh, I mean, 51% of the businesses in there are retail. Maybe 53%, actually, but, I mean, it's a good, I mean, if you think about it, well, even the malls, you know, a lot of the stores are closing. Everything's going online from the terms of retail. So when you say retail, if, if you're more specific, I can tell you if we chase that. Clothing stores, fast food industry, even, even the CVS and Walgreens are looking to downsize into 2,500 square foot spaces. But you wouldn't get any sales tax from that, because that's prescriptions, and they're not taxed. But, you know, the, the small retailer is getting driven out. I mean, and it's just, it's food. Food is driving everything right now. I mean, when we go to the shows, we go to a show on Thursday at the International Council Shopping Center, and just about every retailer there is food. I, I mean, it's, it's, where it used to be, you would have a line waiting to see the Walgreens rep, because Walgreens was expanding on every corner. Same thing with the CVS, same thing with the banks. I know the banks don't generate sales tax. They're not there anymore. It's all food, $100 stores, and a few new pop-ups that are looking to make a break into the industry. But it's, it's retail, but it's, it's medical, but it's retail, in a sense. That's why they call it med tail. Those, they seem to work, and it seems, and the community seemed to be happy about it as well. The, you know, my, my sister-in-law's at one of his facilities just coincidentally in Hickory Hills, because she had to, some incident, she took him to urgent care. It just happened to be there. It's just coincidence.
I call this question.
There, there's no motion made on the floor.
If there's any questions about the retail?
Now I'll formally make a motion.
Give her a second.
Let me read it for the record, because I didn't do it properly.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance for a special use permit to operate an urgent medical care facility for a lead medical LLC, with the condition that an annual sum be paid in lieu of taxes.
Second. Moved by Alderman Scully, second by Alderman McGrogan. Discussion we had already. Roll call.
Alderman Key.
No.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
No.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
No.
Alderman Basso.
No.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As, as I stated previous, there was a number of emails I received with those concerns about parking revenue and the need for this service in town with the hospital. I think all those questions have been answered, so I will vote aye.
All right. I vote yes.
Okay, so, five in favor for you.
Okay.
In case someone didn't hear you.
Yes, I'm sorry. Five in favor. Five in favor.
Yeah, so.
Motion carries.
Carried, okay.
Number 28 on the agenda. I have a motion to approve a proposal for the scope of work for the downtown Palisades redevelopment plan from MKSK Studios, not to exceed $196,000.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Scully, second by Alderman Key. Discussion?
Oh, yeah. I would like to say something. We've, you know, talked about this, when this originally came up, this was an exploratory idea, which, you know, was not going to be binding, at which we all kind of knew that would get to this moment. I've said this before, I'll try to speed it up, because everybody knows how I feel. I will say that going back, we've come a long way in the 20-some years, a lot of people that have been sitting up here. We've had four or five of these different proposals, which, in some cases, the city paid for. In one case, for instance, when we had no money back at the original, the private sector paid for it. I know for a fact, banks that the mayor worked at, myself and some others, chipped in, and we covered the YAS report, because we didn't have the money. Actually, the reason we pay for city stickers at this town now, is because we didn't have the money. Over the years, we've generated quite a bit. Alderman, I mean, the treasurer's report that Jim Damicki presented illustrates that with the funds that we have. And we also spent $2.9 million that last month, and that's about it. Pretty much what we spend, we pretty much take in. And I really do don't think, and even on this proposal, I don't know how this happened, the RFP was like 18 pages. The, the scope on this thing is way too broad. We talked about this. There's things in there that we've already done, that we're trying to pay again. You can look, if you go back and read the four or five reports, that we've spent taxpayer money, including everybody in this room, everybody sitting there, and people on TV, I think it's atrocious that we're going to spend up to $200,000 on this report. We actually have the ability, in this town, to probably do this for damn near nothing. We have people that live in this town, that this is their business. We could actually contact brokers, and builders, and developers to come in and say, what would you do to make the, the two blocks that we're going to, that we're talking about, from 122nd to 124th, spending a couple hundred thousand dollars? You know, as the head of the finance committee, and I know I'm going to get outvoted, but I'm telling you, I'm going on record, we already have implemented, from the other reports, the parking. We keep doing the parking. We did the beautification. We've done that. We, we get lots of compliments. We have other events, the Santa Claus events coming up. We have done the signage. We've done some sidewalks. These are all things that were in the various reports over the last 20 years. We've spent thousands, not, not thou, a thousand dollars, over $100,000 a couple of times, on getting these reports. And for me, I, I mean, why don't we, we haven't even had a business person from the Chamber of Commerce, not once, come in here and complain, other than the parking, which we've addressed, we actually just recently bought another one, for half a million dollars, that'll soon be a parking lot. That, why can't we try to save some money and see, I mean, there's people that would volunteer to be on a blue ribbon committee in this town, to say, you know, I've been here a long time. Why, why don't you do this or do that? If, I think if, I said this before, if you went around the table and asked us, to each one of the aldermen, and the, and the people at the main diets, like, what five things do we really need on that two-block section? I, I mean, I can't come up with two, I, I don't think I could come up with five. I don't know if I could come up with half of five. And so why are we spending, and I know what these reports are. I spent 50 years in this business of every single thing, including some of the subdivisions that we have in this town, that we ask for reports. And we've already got the template five times over. I think, if anything, we should at least try, before we spend $200,000, to say, do we have people that would be, we have developers in this town that do way bigger things than we're talking about, that would love to come in here and say, you know, on a wish list, this is what you could do. But since we over, I'm telling you, the reason that some, you know, people, I know, like, for instance, that Burrit Center, and that Opus did, at the beginning, that wasn't a real success, but that was a vacant piece of property at County Line. And everybody would love to have that in their community, including me. And so, but it's not going to happen, because we don't have that big a parcel. You're, you're not going to change those 100 people, the 100 owners, because there's so many of them. And a lot of them are small business. They can't afford to close their, their bar, restaurant, shoe store, and say, I've got a business for two years, while we rip down the properties and rebuild them. And that's about the, that's what that report's going to say when it's published. I'm done. All I know is, I know I'm going to lose, but I'm telling you, you could do it for a lot cheaper. And I'm voting no.
Mr. Mayor, just, just to, to be clear, though, anything that was done in the past is over, over 20 years old. There was never a funding apparatus, so there was no way to pay for anything. It's not two blocks. The funding apparatus that's going to fund this is all the way from College Drive, all the way to 128th Street. So, it, it's, if, if we invest only in the two blocks, we should be ashamed of ourselves, and we've made that plentifully clear every time this has been discussed. It's not taxpayer money, it's a consumer tax. We set the tax of 1%. We are collecting it. This is not coming out of people's real estate taxes. It's a consumer tax. And yes, when I go to the restaurants, I'm paying that extra 1%. So it is coming out of my pocket. But it's a consumer tax. It's not coming out of real estate. And so, just to be clear on that.
And we did have a meeting with the consultants involved, and telling them, you know, what was done in the past, they're going to use that in doing this. The main thing is, you can have all the consulting you want, unless you come up with a, a plan on how to get it done, and that's what this is going to be.
This report is not 20 years, my comments were not 20 years dated. The last time we did it was 2019. And then after 2019, we had another report done in 2023 in the summer, which a consultant came in, and we hired him as well, and he's the one that came up with the idea of the 1% consumer tax. And whether or not it's a real estate tax, which I agree it's not, it's a consumer tax. The reason that we have a couple hundred thousand dollars in that fund, that came, or maybe even might be up to 400, I don't know the exact amount, but is because people are spending money on it. So it's definitely coming out of the residents and the visitors' packets that come into town. I know I'm going to lose on this one. I'm just telling you, I'm telling you, you could do this a lot cheaper by getting people, they would love, if the mayor put them on a blue ribbon committee, to come in here and say, oh, I'll tell you exactly what to do, probably for nothing.
Last statement I'll make is that, I've said this before, when you hire people for nothing, it's like hiring your uncle to do in your basement. It never gets done.
Not if they're professional, Bob. I mean, listen, when Westgate, the golf course was there, these consultants came in, and they looked at it, and they peed all over that site. Nobody wanted to do it. No bank would touch it. Most of the big developers walked away. The only reason that thing got done is people from this town were involved. And I'm, and that was a report. And to me, sometimes these reports, that the original report was done, they didn't like that, that whole development. Turned out to be great, you know? And so, you, you can't take everything to the bank on what they think. I mean, there's a lot of these reports that just, you, like we did here, we couldn't even find some of the reports of the five that we've done. You know, when I asked staff to look them up so that we could see, that we didn't even have them. They were in the garbage somewhere. I mean, I'm, I'm just telling you, you could do it all that cheap.
All right. Roll call. Do you have a second? You do have a second?
Yes, we do. Okay. Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
No.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
No.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Six to two. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, that's all for my report.
All right. Recreation, Alderman Key?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Halloween is coming up, and the Rec Department is having the annual Touch Truck and Treat event, as they always do. It's going to be held on Thursday, October 23rd, from 5:00 to 8:00 in the evening. And they've added a pumpkin patch this year. So have your kids come out, and they can go through the pumpkin patch and purchase pumpkin, I believe. And then there's a couple of opportunities coming up to actually, for our residents, to come in and try some of the classes. So let's say someone might be interested in a yoga class. The week of, October 27th through the 1st of November, and then again, right after the New Year, January 5th through the 10th, you can sign up for free classes during that time, and come out and try that. And there are still opportunities also on Fridays, that you can come in and try the, in the fitness center, you can try out the equipment there, too, for residents for free. And I believe that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Roads to construction, Alderman Clifford.
Just an announcement on there, not much on, on that. Herald is being, gas lines over there are being repaired. The house on Melvina, that's with a controversy for the past few years, has been demolished, it's been leveled, the ground has been filled in, grass, black dirt, grass, that has been grassed over. And Melvina in its entirety of the street has been repaved. So the whole area there is done, and all done. The eyesore is gone. It's a...
License permits and franchisees, Alderman Lewandowski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report.
Alderman Brennan?
I have a few things, Mr. Mayor. Water and sewer report. First, I'd like to make a motion to approve payment number 12 to Calumet City Plumbing for the water meter replacement program, in the amount of $81,016.
Moved by Alderman Brennan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Begley. Discussion? Roll call.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of updated meter reading equipment and software from Corin Maine, in the amount of $17,000.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Key. Discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve payment number one to Dami Mechanical Industries Incorporated for the construction of the 300,000 gallon ground level storage tank, in the amount of $65,860.
Moved by Alderman Brennan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Key. Discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve purchase of a 2025 Transit 250 Cargo Rear-Wheel Medium Roof Van with Curry Motors through the suburban purchasing co-op, in the amount of $51,781.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Key. Discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes. Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve payment number one to Furpal Construction for the 131st Street Water Main Lining, in the amount of $406,108.79.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Key, I mean Brennan, second by Alderman Key. Discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Basso.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Hi.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Hi.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Hi.
Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve foregoing the official bid process and approve the water main replacement on 125th Street and 76th Avenue by Anchor Heavy Civil, in the amount of $56,900 for labor only. This has just been a problem. I think this is the fourth time we've replaced, or worked on that water main this year, and just need to kind of get it done.
Okay. Moved by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Key. Discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Uh-huh.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
and Seventy-sixth Avenue not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
Move by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Key. Discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Finally, I'd like to make a motion to approve payment for professional engineering services with Strand Associates Incorporated for the alternative water supply analysis, College Drive Water Main CIPP lining and the one hundred and thirty-first Street Water Main CIPP lining rendering through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five in the amount of twenty-five thousand nine hundred and nine dollars and five cents.
Second.
Move by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Key. Discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Business and economic development, Alderman Key?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned before, the farmer's market is coming to a close, it's tomorrow and next week. But I'd just like to say thank you, the rec department kind of runs that, but there's a lot of volunteers that come out on a regular basis every week and help with the, the welcoming booth and, and taking care of things. And, you know, one of the booths is, they bring in local groups to come in and use them. So all that's taken care of by the group that runs this, and I just want to say thank you to them. Secondly, Lake Catherine has a, a pumpkin smash every year. So when the season is done and your pumpkins are ready to be tossed out, they're suggesting you not throw them in the garbage, bring them over to Lake Catherine, and it, it takes place on November eighth from nine o'clock to twelve o'clock in the morning. And in the, right in the parking lot, they'll, they'll have a pumpkin smash. And so it's kind of fun and doing something for the environment at the same time.
Figure, figure frustrations out of them.
What's that?
Figure frustrations out of them, which is what I do every year, so.
Kind of use a baseball bat and the other stuff.
Sun chamber.
So this year, the beautification committee is going to have, to start off, I, I believe they did this once in the past, but we're going to have a, a Christmas lighting, a kind of contest in the, in the Heights. And so there's a submission form that's on the city website, and you can either submit it for yourself, or, or if you know someone, a neighbor or a relative in town that's got nice Christmas lights, you can put their address in. Those submissions have to be turned in by the eighth of December, and then on the tenth of December, the committee will go around and judge them all, and then we'll announce the winners on the sixteenth at our city council meeting. And so that's kind of something new popping up again, and I think it's going to be kind of nice because anyone that drives through town, there's a lot of homes that are just beautiful at Christmas.
Getting bigger every year, too.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That'd be a good idea.
Cable TV?
Uh, no report this week, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any old business?
Old business. Seeing that I wasn't able to interject in the city plan discussion, I'm just wondering, and just cut me short because it's late, we've already discussed this. Before the plan, as the plan is developing, has anybody suggested that we put a freeze on the facade money that, that we give away and the sign money that we give away, and maybe hold the one percent that we have if there was a plan in place or not, until the plan comes along and the plan is accepted?
Well, we, we haven't spent any of the one percent, that, that's not been spent at all. The other one, I'll take a look at that for you, sure, yeah, we'll see what we've got, unless we have some pending, but.
I mean, does that money come from finance?
Well, the dollars are in the budget, but as, as the mayor pointed out, nobody's really, no, wait, we did a couple of two thousands.
I've got one pending right now.
Two, two thousands.
I've got one for now.
I mean, it's like, it's like chasing your tail if you're gonna, if you're gonna give away city money for someone to do signs and.
But it's, this report, unless it changed, it's going to take eighteen months to, or longer, so.
I understand, I may be wrong, but I think I read in the Tribune a couple of weeks ago that Timely Park froze all their permits until their plan came to fruition and they decided what they were going to do. Rather than let developers keep developing, it might be contrary, totally contrary to whether the plan that is determined to be the future.
Well, I, I think we'll have to take it as it comes, and, you know, if we have someone who wants to open up a store front, you know, we're not going to say you can't do that until we get this plan done, I mean.
Well, it's, we, we still don't have to give away the money they get.
Well, if it's pivotal to them opening a store, we may want to do it, you know, so.
I mean, we probably had more sign things approved this year than in the last ten combined, and it's been because of, of the redevelopment of Tiffany.
And we're not giving away much more money than what the cost of an angel is, let's be honest.
No, because it, it's capped at like twenty-five hundred dollars or something, and so it's not a great deal of money.
It's not, it's not a huge amount of money.
And I, I think we'd run into problems too, we, you know, we passed the, the one percent based on the merchants saying that, you know, we would give them some of the money to improve their, so, as much as I was against the other thing. I'm more in favor of saying, keep it going, you know, don't stop, you know, the improvement, make your business look better and spend the money. You know, we give them fifty percent, if it costs five thousand, we've been giving them two thousand. Some of them are actually more than fifty, a lot more than fifty percent. So I, I would say we'd run into problems on it. I mean, I don't think we should do it.
Yeah, we'll look at it, though. Okay. All right, any other old business? Citizens wish to ask questions? Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Linda Miller, seventy-two, twenty-eight, one hundred and twenty-fifth Street. As long as I'm here, and you were talking about the immediate care facility that wants to come in and Pelos Northwestern Hospital. I'm just wondering, I've been hearing since Northwestern took over Pelos that it is, plans to become a trauma center. Does anybody?
I have not heard that at all.
I hope that's not true.
Yeah, I have not heard that at all.
So honestly, it's, I've been hearing this from people who seem to work there.
I've talked, I've talked to the president, he hasn't mentioned it to me, so.
I'm not sure if the facility's even, I don't, big enough to, to do that.
Okay.
An access is not that good, but.
Okay, that's good to hear, thank you, thank you.
All right, with that.
I just have one, I'm sorry, under new business, I, I remembered, I meant, I mentioned this earlier, that Norrell Jewelers, I read an article in the paper, I haven't spoken to them, but they are doing an awareness for breast cancer awareness this month, and in, in honor of a employee of theirs that I believe fought the battle herself, and they are urging residents to put pink ribbons around a tree at their home if they can, and I believe there's some kind of pink jewelry sale that they're doing there, so, you know, just a neighborhood visit, great Pelos business that is, is raising your.
And October is breast, cancer awareness, but so.
We've got it on the front side.
Michelle from, reached out to us, and so that we can put, I think they're going to put pink ribbons on all the trees, so.
Awesome.
Good, right.
Entertainer motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, just got one announcement, a little thing I'd like to read, it's in relation to Veterans Day coming up. It's a big spot we need with former, myself and Alderman McGovern. It's just a little quote, it sort of makes a point into it, it says, "I cherish the memories of the question my grandson asked me the other day, he said, 'Grandpa, were you a hero in the war?' And he said, 'No, but I served in a company of heroes.' That was a quote from Band of Brothers with Major Dick Winters, out going, by out quoting Sergeant Mike Rainey in the closing moments of the movie Band of Brothers. It's a reminder that the true greatness lies in humility and the sacrifice of the bonds between ordinary people who did extraordinary things together, grateful today for the courage of their legacy and the freedom we all enjoy today." So I'd just like to say, keep that in mind when Veterans Day comes up, and if you see somebody out there, veteran, if you know he is, go up and just give them a thanks and say, "Thanks for what you do, thanks for providing for us, thanks for giving us what we enjoy today." That's all I want to say. And if you feel like the breakfast thing we give away, if you feel like you want to donate a little prize, you could drop it at City Hall, and I'd be glad to acknowledge it and that, and I'll pick them all up for the breakfast up there on Veterans Day. As Linda said, it's hard to drum up funds, but I don't stop, and I'm going to keep doing it, but it's a great cause. And being I did serve in the Marine Corps in sixty-seven, and Alderman McGovern served in Marine Corps in nineteen sixty-five, and that guy went to living hell over there, so I'd just like to say thank you to all the people that would consider this, thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
All right, with that, entertainer motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.